Do you know when to die?
You're live.
All right. Thank you. This is a regular meeting Tuesday, April 22nd of the planning board. We are back home again. We're not in the main room. And we're back to our old agenda. I need, call it to order. I need the roll call, please.
Steven Decimode.
Here.
Thomas Callahan.
Present.
Rupert Friday.
Here.
Dr. O'Neil.
Here.
Mark Brady.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a full board and a court.
Thank you. I'm gonna make some, I'm gonna use CERC Chairman's announcements and like a motion to move, to continue to a date certain. Do we have a date?
May 20th.
May 20th. The approval of the minutes, these are bogged down with the Sears catalog that will be the special meeting minutes. So if I can have a motion and a second on that, I'd like that.
Mr. Chairman, I think the minutes for the 18th are in the second.
I think the 18th is still go, yes. I think you're right. So on March 24th, 25th, 2nd and 3rd.
So move.
Second it?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I would also like a motion, as we have a lot of people here, as excited as they might be to sit through zoning ordinance, tax amendments, I'd like to move that to after site review, if that is okay with the board?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we're gonna jump in and we will start with, yeah, we go, that's hitting there. You're excited?
No, no, I don't want to.
So, so we have, our first order of business is the election of our planning board secretary. Rupert has volunteered to step forward to do that.
So move.
Just because this is our thing.
Just because he wasn't in broke. It has been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of electing Rupert as our planning board secretary, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstained.
You have been drafted unanimously. Brilliant, brilliant selection on the board's part. Thank you Rupert. All right. So, we're gonna start with site review guys, just so these folks don't have to sit through all our business unless they really like this. I'll give the staff a second to catch up with us. So first up will be Knolls Way Camp, plat S1, lot 291-26, 64 Burnside Ave, unit 26. The applicant has submitted a request to demolish an existing dwelling and construct a new seasonal dwelling unit on lot number 26 pursuant to Knolls Camp's master agenda. Agreement, this application requires a special use permit and expansive and non-conforming use. Try to give a Reader's Digest version. You need relief for expansive and non-conforming use and also Knolls Way Camp in terms of conditions, reconstruction of units, condition number four. The applicant has submitted a request to construct a new type D unit that is located within a residential campground located on lot 291 and plat S1. Building officials have indicated that the site is a legal non-conforming use, therefore any building alteration are subject to four development standards of section 10.1 alterations to a non-conforming use and structures. They are: the reconstruction of the building does not result in the increase in the existing degree of any dimensional non-conformity; that the footprint of the building or structure is not extended, extended or enlarged by greater than 25% of the existing building footprint as of October 11th, 1989; that the exterior appearance of the reconstructed building remains substantially the same or is changed to enhance its appearance on the site in harmony with the surrounding area; and four, it must demonstrate, it must be demonstrated that site can accommodate the proposed level of use. Its construction shall include but not be limited to safety, traffic, parking, sewage disposal capacity, utilities, noise levels, odors, and quality of water and air. Steve, just for you, Knolls has different type buildings that are already there and it's kind of cookie cutter. They pick what they want and stuff. And then they have a review and it comes to us for special permits. It's like breakwater.
Yeah.
Okay?
Jill told me about it when it was supposed to be on a couple of, a month ago or something.
No problem. I just wanted to make sure. All right. Good evening, sir. How are you? Would you introduce yourself?
My name's John Susziak. I'm a resident of Massachusetts. I live at 24 Wickstead Court in Douglas, Mass. I'm a high school educator up in Massachusetts for 40 years. I'm retiring this June after 40 years, 30 years as an assistant principal. My family, my dad built this little cottage at Knolls in 1950 with any little piece of wood that he could get his hands on. It's scraps and, but it served our family well. It survived every hurricane that's come up the coast and it hasn't moved, but my wife and I are looking to expand it and, you know, take the town and just live a little more comfortably. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Thank you. Staff, you wanna fill in any blanks that I had left?
The only thing that you didn't mention was, oh, you mentioned the relief requested. There is a specific term, the condition number four.
Yeah.
That it relates to the foundation of the building. Typically, these are built on slabs, slab on grades. However, this one is proposed to be constructed on pillar, or piers. I consulted the building official. He has no problem with it. He said it's at the discretion of the board to approve it. It's not my comment.
All right. Doc O'Neil, question?
Yeah, I, just a couple of, a couple things. This is the same size as the structure you're taking down, right?
Yes, it is. It's, there's a master plan update that the town has approved and each lot is designed for a separate, I think there's five, Mr. True, five units? A to D and my lot is designed to the master plan for the B units, 18 by 40. It's just a shotgun ranch, a couple of small bedrooms and living room, kitchen and stuff like that. I'm not stepping outside the master plan, other than the, the foundation. People that have the slabs went happy with them. They had whisked. There's about 20, I'd say about 25 new houses up there now that aren't piers already. They just like it. You can slide stuff under there. If it rains, there's a foot of crushed stone that's put under there and it almost acts as a little bit of a beach field to pick up some water that when it run off and stuff like that. So, like I said, I'm not looking to step outside the master plan whatsoever.
Well, the, the interesting thing about this location, I've been in there in the summer, but you can't get in there now. If you wanna go look at the site, which I don't think is terribly important because, you know, you guys have that, that over. There's no, there's no up close picture which would obviously tell the story dramatically, a lot more dramatically than you described. It's time to replace this, you know? So just a thought, when, when, when we have these, this before us, especially at this time of year.
Yeah.
You know, the gates lock. So...
I thought I had sent the picture of the cottage when I, when I submitted the application.
Yeah, 'cause that pretty much makes the...
It's just a little dining block.
It's time, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did a Google Earth search.
We'll call it intimate code.
Yeah. The owners have done a tremendous job.
The owners have done a masterful job.
A masterful job. Yeah, let me tell you. I was there in the days in this truly camp run. They have made it a, a diamond in the rough in arrogance. I can tell you that. It's a great little spot.
It is.
To be, and I'm glad, my father was glad to be a part of that camp run. I'm glad to be part of this. Just looking to stay, just looking to spend the rest of my life here.
I was referring to your, taking care of your little homestead that's there. Rupert?
Yeah, so, where Dr. O'Neil is, is waiting for a card from the town to say that he's a planning board member to walk around the gates. I walked around the gate and I can attest that your plan is an improvement over what's there.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's gonna be, we're excited. My wife and I are totally excited to get this done. Thank you. No questions. Yeah, redirect it?
No, I just wanted to compliment you on walking around the gate. I did, no, I did that. I'm getting old, you know? I did that last year. One of these came up, last year or the year before and, it's a little tricky. So, but that was very close. I think it was like the third or fourth.
Got to look out for the wildlife in there when you're walking in, in the off season though. There's a lot of things that run around in there.
In there. But any case, my compliments to my colleague.
Go ahead.
Doc is a real follower. Tom?
I have no questions.
Okay. Steve?
I also have no questions. Thank you.
No problem.
Staff?
Nothing else.
Nothing else. I have no questions also. All right. This has gotta go to zoning anyways, right?
Yes.
So, all right. So, I need, yeah, I need two. I need a motion to...
Completeness and a motion for, for acceptance. So, move the application before us, Knolls Camp. Susziak, if I say it right, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely correct.
Tax Assessor, plat S1, lot 291-26 is complete and in conformance of the town comprehensive plan.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nice habit. Do I have a motion on a recommendation of zoning?
Move the application before us, Knolls Camp, Susziak, Tax Assessor, plat S1, lot 291-26, positively with the staff's comments and recommendations which you've already reviewed.
You understand those.
Yeah. Dated March 12th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good luck in zoning.
Thanks.
Yeah, they're tough.
Thank you, gentlemen. My fault is for not being here a month ago.
Relax.
So thanks.
Real busy anyway, don't worry.
Yeah, we had a rough month.
Okay. Excuse me. I have, I put those one way home on the second. Did I skip? I tend to. Pavia, Tax Assessor, plat U, lot 26. Existing conditions, lot 26 is approximately 7,885 square foot in size, located R20 zone district and is currently vacant. Existing 20 by 23 foundation. Proposed demolition of existing foundation, construction of a 26 by 5, .5 foot by 29.6 foot, two bedroom, single family dwelling with a 24.5 foot by 20.9 foot rear yard, deck and stairs. Proposed building and lot coverage will be approximately 1,059 square feet or 13.4%. Project complies with dimensional regulations. It is serviced by sewer and water. The project is located in a FEMA flood plain, so that takes its own roots. In a letter dated January 13th, 2025 engineering, pardon to approve this project as it relates to supplementary drainage. All right. Proposed parking area complies with section 7.9 zoning. It's in a residential height moderate. The lot is located in R20 and is approximately 78, 85 square feet in size. Therefore, modified setbacks are applied for recently passed House Bill 7949A. Bill 7949A states that, "If the subject lot is non-conforming as to lot area in any zoning district in the municipality, the setback lot frontage and lot width shall be reduced by the same proportion that the area of such standard lot meets the minimum of the lot area of the district in which it is located." Lot 62 is approximately 60% deficient or 39% of the minimum lot size required in an R20 zone. This lot does not meet the minimum requirements of recognized zoning district in the town. Therefore, the maximum lot covered and setback permitted increases by the same proportion that this lot is step standard, 39%. As proposed, this project complies with modified dimensional regulations. It's in a coastal resource district. It is, is there any other thing? This project must conform to natural flood insurance and any proposed site work and plan which we'll go over later. Did I kinda get everybody up to date? Do you wanna introduce yourselves and...
How are we doing? My name is Dan Pava. I'm currently a Smithfield resident, but my family is soon to be an arrogance residence, actually has a Friday.
Do you have your passport?
I don't. So, my parents, my parents actually built the house next door, 70's Pond, a few years ago. My sister and I purchased a lot next to it, 30's Pond, a couple of years ago and they'll, they're ready to, to follow the project and build a structure on it.
Staff?
So there is, there, sorry.
All right, go ahead. No.
There is a, there is an approved CRMC permit on the law already to build a structure on the current foundation that's in, that's in the ground. The structure that we're proposing, it'll be coming further away from the coastal feature. We're not looking for any dimensional relief. You know, we're just looking for a special use permit due to being in the, in the coastal, the coastal buffer zone.
So they're trying to reduce the impact as far as location of the house?
The structure's location is further away than the existing foundation on site. However, the proposed porch is what's getting a little bit closer than the existing one.
You wanna give some details on the, on that?
Steve?
I used to, porch, you meant deck?
Deck, sorry. Yes. Do you want to?
Right.
Yeah, so if you see right here, this is what's, the, the existing approval from, from zoning is for this structure right here. That's the foundation that you see in the aerial. And right here, they're getting a little bit closer than that existing stoop. So this proposed deck is getting, I think, is three feet?
Three feet closer?
Three feet closer.
Is the deck elevated? Is it cantilevered off, is it off the ground?
I believe so.
Okay.
There.
And if you go back, it would strike me that the deck is actually more out of compliance due to the fact that they put the house more in compliance.
Sorry, say again?
If you go back to the first slide, so by, by bringing the house, so by reducing the impact of the house on, on the setback, they actually increased the deck just from cantilevering the...
It's not a cantilever.
It's not cantilevered?
It's not cantilevered. It's just raised. It's above the buffer zone.
Okay. So, all right.
Not a cantilever.
All right. Not cantilevered, sorry.
In terms of CRMC, you know, the, the deck is not, is not an issue within coastal buffer zone?
Right. There's, but we have layers. Welcome to Rhode Island. Okay. Doc, any questions?
Well, yeah, you asked the one that was most critical, which was, was the deck cantilevered so it doesn't touch down near, near it, but obviously it doesn't. And there's a stairway there too, to the, to where the water. But, the good news is it's not a five bedroom house. Thank you.
No, it's not. It is a small structure. It's only two bedrooms, two bathrooms.
Now, I say that publicly because that's, that's come up many times.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Good. Rupert?
Yeah, I guess a question for staff because it seems to me the coastal overlay district, the most important aspect of that for a special use permit is, proposed project will not interfere with public access or use enjoyment entitled waters and shoreline features. And it looks like there's a right away there, isn't it?
Are you referring to...
I'm just looking at the...
Yeah, it'd be this corner right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's off their property line.
Yeah, they're, the, the deck would extend no further than right about there. And the house, I think, goes just as far as right there. That's, that's pretty far off their property line.
So this doesn't encourage on...
No. It doesn't.
Right away at all?
Yeah.
And I guess the only other observation I have, if you go back to the survey, I guess, is that, so, it, it's more of an angle from the property line than previous, in the previous foundation. So, I don't know if it was more square with the previous foundation, it'd be less impacting than the, than the buffer. I don't know. Just an observation. And it's really, it's really a CRMC issue, just an observation.
Yeah, and they approved it. They already approved it.
No, they approved the foundation.
Foundation.
Yeah.
So, I know, when I looked at it, it just seemed that by moving the house, the deck itself is not much different than the old foundation was.
Yeah, there's just a little piece there.
It's just that little piece there and over here. Yeah. And it's raised.
Tom?
Was there a house on that foundation?
There was. There was a house on the foundation.
What happens in the house?
The house was torn down. Then it was, it was approved to build a structure on the existing foundation. And then, that's one my sister and I purchased, purchased a lot.
And when you say CRMC has agreed to the foundation, have they reviewed plans for this?
They have now reviewed the plans for, for this structure, yeah.
All right. So you don't have, you don't have an approval from CRMC for this particular structure that you're proposing?
No, there's, there's approval for, for a structure to be built on the existing foundation.
But this isn't gonna be built on these?
No, no, this will be a brand new foundation.
So you don't have approval?
Exactly. Exactly. Our goal's close, closer, further away from the coastal feature.
As Mark said, there are layers to this. And when you go to the zoning board, if they're paying attention, they'll point to the overlay district variance and special use permits. And there's language there that says that they must, the zoning board must make specific findings of that, defining any environmentally sensitive feature, meaning coastal, coastal feature here, to be protected in the manner in which granting the special use permit in variance will enhance, enhance the protection of coastal and environmental sensitive features. So, I guess, just as a prelude to that, could you help us understand how this will enhance the protection of that, that particular resource?
Yeah, definitely. So the, the foundation that will, the footprint that we'll be building is, we've given additional relief from the current, current foundation that's existing in the ground. So we've pulled it, you know, pulled it further. And we wanna bring up, we're accounting for future sea level rise as well as trying to become FEMA compliant as well.
But your argument, your argument is you're pulling the, you're pulling the foundation further away from the coastal feature, but you're still building proximity, including the deck that's closer to the coastal feature than the exist, than what you've, what was previously approved.
That's correct. That's correct. The, so the closest point on the deck is 37, 37 feet, three inches. And the current foundation closest point is 36 and a half feet. So, we are looking for an additional few inches there.
Thank you. Steve? Are you gonna alter the coastal feature at all during construction?
No, we, we won't be because this is less than a 50%. Less than a 50% increase.
Good answer. Why two bedrooms and not four? You're on sewer. Why not ask for what you're allowed?
Well, honestly, the cost, cost of construction. We're trying to keep costs lower. So, yeah, it's good. My, like I said, my parents live next door. Well, they will be living there next door full time. It's more of a family, family project in the future, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Well.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody in the public have a comment? Staff, redirect you. Anything?
No, I've got nothing.
I don't have anything.
So this is gonna have to get CRMC approval and zoning.
Yeah, and just, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, CRMC approval always comes last.
Right.
So, no applicant would walk in here with CRMC approval. They take the last by the gamble.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I kinda understood that. Redirect, Doc? No, I usually do a redirect. Redirect, Doc? Anything? Dr. O'Neil?
No, yeah, the, the only thing you would wish you could cantilever the deck to, you know, to touch that soil closer to the, but that's a technical thing.
Yeah. Not, not my, my world. Rupert? Tom?
Nothing.
Steve?
Nothing.
The fact that you're moving the foundation away, I like that. The deck is elevated. I'm not gonna lose any sleep over that. You're still gonna have to go zoning. You're still gonna have to get CRMC. So when you go to zoning, you don't have CRMC approval for this. Right. I didn't say anything when you first mentioned it because it wasn't the time to do it, but when you insisted that you had it, it was like, no, you don't. So, okay? And they're gonna have their own reviews, but, all right. Do I have a motion for completeness?
Yes, you do. Move the application before us, Pava, Tax Assessor, plat U, lot 62 is complete and in conformance with town comprehensive plan.
Second it, second it I have. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Do I have a motion, recommendation to zoning?
Yes. Move the application before us, Pava, Tax Assessor, plat U, lot 62, favorably with the staff's comments, recommendations which you agreed to, you already read them. Dated April 16th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good luck.
Thank you.
I have Marcy, plat S1, lot 2717, Green Lane. Existing condition, lot 217 is approximately 11,995 square feet in size and is located in R10 zone. Existing 44 foot by 24 foot, four bedroom dwelling with an attached 22 by 14 garage. Existed building and lot coverage is approximately 1,345 square feet or 11.3%. Looking to convert an existing office located in the first floor into a fifth bedroom. Proposed lot and lot coverage will not change. Based on the findings, this project has proposed complies with dimensional regulations in section 6.4. Lot is serviced by water and sewer. During the building review process, we determined that supplemental drainage section was not required. Proposed parking area complies with 7.9 in the zoning ordinance, 300 square feet per bedroom. As this lot is 1452 square feet, onsite parking and one car garage for a five bedroom dwelling. The future land use density of the property is residential height moderate. Lot is located in Scarborough neighborhood and complies with the lot requirements for an R10 zone. Currently existing on the lot is a four bedroom dwelling with an attached garage. The applicant is seeking approval to convert an existing 12 by 8 office located in the first floor into a fifth bedroom. Staff notes where Rhode Island State Building Code requires any room occupied for sleeping purpose, the at least seven, 70 square feet, this proposed satisfies requirement as it is 96 square feet. Requires a special use permit for a five bedroom. Staff, do you find that, found that it complies, the project complies and satisfies all necessary requirements for homes exceeding four bedrooms?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that introduction. Michael Monte from Sari, and there on behalf of the applicant. Unfortunately, the applicant can't be here this evening because he's out of state. I think the application speaks for itself. It's an existing four bedroom dwelling. The floor plan for the first floor is up. On the top left-hand corner, you can see the office that's proposed to be converted. What's not shown here is, in the building permit that was applied for, the plan is actually to bump out that bedroom approximately one and a half feet. So it'll be closer to a 12 by 10. The applicant meets all of the standards from section 12.23.
What do you mean by bumped out?
So, I understand that this will be bumped out into the living room, approximately one foot, one and a half feet. Yeah, so no exterior alteration. Everything is contained within.
How much, the opening from the living room into what appears to be a closet and then the staircase, that's gonna be reduced by a foot and a half. What is that opening? Do you know?
Which opening are you referring to?
Top. Right there. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
I figured you had the same question.
Yes, I'm not sure precisely what that dimension is. I know that it'll have to meet the building code for that. And so they were separate, you know, the process was submit the building application permit. That gets denied. Come here, come to zoning. So, that dimension will be required to be within the building code. And if it's not, then the so-called bump out, as I perhaps misphrased it, would, would be reduced. So it's entirely interior renovation and the only construction whatsoever is the alteration to that wall and the construction of a closet.
You might wanna have that for zoning when you go.
Agreed.
Okay.
Can I answer? Any other questions?
Staff, anything you wanna add to this before we get to the board?
Nope. I've got nothing else, staff.
Okay. Doc O'Neil?
Yeah, I think you pretty much described what you're planning to do. And I think the comments from our, our staff are supportive of it. And is that the parking on the outside? So I don't see there's any, any question other than what you just described, making sure your dimensions are reasonable. sure your dimensions are reasonable before you get to the zoning board. So I don't have any other questions or comments.
Rupert?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add.
Tom?
This is an arcane question for Nick.
Try me.
Nick, I think if you look at the records, this property is actually owned by an LLC. It's not directly owned by Mr. Marcy. He's the principal, but it's an LLC that owns it. Who is the applicant? When you, when basically someone files the application, is the owner filing the application? How does that work?
Generally, it's the owner who signs it.
So Neil, this is not, this is signed by Mr. Marcy, but it's owned by an LLC.
Is it one and the same, Mike?
So according to the city records, excuse me, the town's records at least, the property is titled to Dominic Marcy and Jennifer Yutz. That was my understanding when the application was put together.
According to the Narragansett Rental Registry and according to the State Short-Term Rental Registry, the applicant, the owner of the property is an LLC.
Be interested to see what's on the deed. Maybe, and you could imagine a scenario where somebody is running a business out of their residence, that business may be an LLC. However, the residence may be owned in an individual capacity. So there's, we'll keep up with the theme tonight, there might be multiple layers there, but it may all check out. But I know, Mr. Monty?
Yeah, I'll take a look at the deed before we go to zoning and make sure that the advertisement is appropriate. But at least based on the assessor's database, it would appear that the property is titled, said the individuals, but I will confirm more going to zoning.
So this, this is a rental?
That's correct.
Okay. So the operation is an LLC, I presume?
I maybe, I'm not prepared to answer that question this evening.
No, I'm just, these are questions that are going to probably come in zoning, too.
Certainly.
Steve? Anybody in the audience? Based on staff's recommendations, everything complies?
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the proposed conditions, proposed conditions one and two, I would request be removed just because they relate to things that are inapplicable. So a soil erosion, excuse me, two and three.
Two and three.
A soil erosion plan, and that any area of disturbance be reseeded or sodden with low maintenance conservation grass mixture, that because there's no exterior work proposed, conditions two and three would, would be inapplicable. So I would request that they not be attached to whatever recommendation you make.
Steph? I'm, I'm okay with that, if you, if you guys are okay with that.
I'm okay.
I would add, I would add the, I would add a condition, though, that the access egress through the living room be clarified.
Yes.
As part of this approval process. Okay? You okay with that?
Yes, I would not object to that.
Okay. And then leave the LLC for you to clear up. Alright?
Yeah, I was just going to say, they're going, there's going to be construction here. So the, I, nobody disturbs the lawns and the, whatever.
Doc, if they're moving a wall and they're disturbing the law, we got to think about
No, they're inside, I know, but the, the people park outside and if they have their saws and whatever, the way they're working outside, it's not a bad idea that they, but I would, I would expect, obviously the property's maintained, I would expect to, to clear that up. I think, isn't that why you put this in?
Typically, it's when there's new construction because that's pretty invasive to the surface.
That's not the service, you know? It's a, yeah, people, people walk and carry everything on their shoulder and tiptoe in the front door. So that's not the way it works.
Steve, I'm not going to ask you because I know you're a need, Nick.
Yeah, what do you think, Steve?
Is this onerous to keep this in? Is it onerous?
Is it onerous? It's superfluous. I wouldn't say onerous, certainly superfluous. They're, they're the only way in, it's a door, and they've got pavement right up to the door. I don't see how they could mess the grass up unless the worst drive is on earth, but.
I mean, I'm fine with condition two. It's really this, having to prepare a soil erosion control plan.
Right.
I mean, two is sort of irrelevant because there's not going to be any area of disturbance. So I don't, but I just don't want to be in a situation where the building department says, well, where's your soil erosion control plan?
That's reasonable.
Chairman, I, I marked my, to delete those two.
Delete those two. Alright, do I have a motion for completeness?
Wait, wait a minute here, Tom.
Hold on.
Another question for you, Nick. Is there a generally understood and accepted definition of standard number six in terms of the use will not result in or create conditions in medical, the public health safety, morals, or the general welfare?
I, I've always read that as exactly what it says. I don't, I don't have any other definition of what's provided there as, as you read it.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have a redirect? Doc, you want to make a motion for completeness?
Sure. Yeah, application before us, Marcy, Tax Assessor, Plat S one, Lot two-seven-one is complete and in conformance with the Town Comprehensive Plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm going to abstain on this one.
You're going to abstain?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Do I have a motion for recommendation to zoning?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get the other one. I'm finally coming. I changed my vote on that one.
Alright.
Okay, now, move on.
So you have unanimous on that.
Moving on. Move the application before us, Marcy, Tax Assessor, Plat S one, Lot two-seven-one, favorably, with the staff's comments, recommendations dated April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, with the deletion of conditions number two and three.
And the inclusion of clarification of access egress through the living room with the wall bumped out. That has to be defined. Okay?
Right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Yep.
Okay. Alright. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Although it'll be a fifth bedroom. Yes.
I have Lindstrom, Tax Assessor, Plat M.
Door to window, right?
M, I have Lindstrom, Tax Assessor, Plat M, Lot one-six-seven dash twenty-two, for Hovberg Street. The applicant has submitted a request to construct a two-story, two-bedroom dwelling with a rear yard, deck, and stairs. Proposed project requires a special use permit from the Breakwater Village Special District, section four point eight, point one, point six C, section four point eight, point one, point six F. This project also requires a variance from the dimensional regulations, four point eight, point one, point five. This applicant is being reviewed under the amended Breakwater Village Special District's regulations effective June one, twenty, two thousand and nine. Findings of fact, existing condition, the lot, excuse me, one-six-seven dash two-two is approximately two thousand eight hundred and forty-two square feet in size and is located in Breakwater Village Special District and is currently vacant. Construction of a, proposed, construction of a thirty-six by twenty-point-five-foot, two-story, two-bedroom dwelling with an eight-point-three by fourteen-point-two-five second-story rear yard deck and a six-point-four by four-point-five left-side yard landing with stairs. Proposed lot coverage will be approximately nine hundred and forty-eight-point-two-four square feet or thirty-third, thirty-three-point-three percent. Alright? Lot is approximately two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two square feet, an area located within the Breakwater Village. Far for this project is calculated at point four-two for one thousand two hundred and nineteen square feet. A maximum of three point nine for one thousand one hundred and eight square feet is permitted in this lot. The height of the new dwelling is proposed at twenty-six point five. A maximum of twenty-three is permitted in the lot size if deemed appropriate by zoning board review. Lot one-six-seven dash two-two is serviced by Town Water and Sewer. Approximately four hundred and sixteen square feet of pervious parking area is proposed on the site, which satisfies the two hundred square foot parking required for a two-bedroom. In a letter dated February twenty-fifth, the engineering department approved this project as it relates to supplemental drainage. Breakwater Village Architectural Review denied this project in March twenty twenty-five. That's kind of the Reader's Digest version.
There were only a couple of people in the audience, but when you use FAR the first time?
Yeah, far is floor area ratio. It was actually developed and within Breakwater Village. They requested it. It is used to keep a proportionally appropriate dwelling to the size of the lot. So it is a ratio between the square footage of the lot and the size of the home. And it's designed so that no one home overpowers any others. It's also designed to keep character in the neighborhood, similar heights, similar bulk, dimensions, et cetera. And Breakwater Village created this, and it comes to us as part of the process. So, folks?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the applicant, her husband, who is unable to be here today. My name is John Benalag. I represent the applicant. And the reason for the variances on this particular structure is not because of convenience for just an enjoyment of a larger structure. The husband is suffering from a very serious illness, which requires a wider area in hallways, doorways. And when you look at the proposal, we're not talking about feet and two, three, four feet. We're talking actually a half a foot in some areas and a foot, but one point two feet in another area. And the height is to give the ability for the structure itself to be sound. And it actually is being accommodating on a person who is, has a handicap. Aside from that, it's a progressive disease that cannot be turned around. They bought the property back in two twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. You're going to have to excuse my voice, but coming back to Narragansett, and I always get a little foggy. But I lived here for many years, a long time ago, probably longer than most people that are in this room. But the fact is, they bought the property in two twenty-two. At that time, this structure would have been permitted. The change was made in twenty-three. During that period of time, they had requested a design on a house, but her husband had to turn to the worse. So they had to focus on his health and to rehabilitate him. So when they came back to build, the house that they were in is totally inadequate for them to accommodate him. And the assistance that Mrs. Exhurly Lundstrom would need, there are people that live in the same area, right down the street, that are very good friends of theirs, that can assist with her husband in any kind of needs that require. So we're actually, we're asking, go back to the twenty twenty-two, so that we can build a house that is accommodating his health conditions, so he can move about either in an electric wheelchair or a wheelchair powered by a person. And the rooms will be a little bit bigger, the hallways will be a little bit bigger to accommodate that need. Given the square footage or the floor area ratio, we're talking about a hundred and eleven square feet? That's, that's not much at all. That's ten by eleven, spread out into the entire structure. You're not talking a lot of room. I, I know that planning boards, even zoning boards, have a tendency to look upon dimensional variances as something that is sacred and should be solid. But the planning board and the zoning board can and does have the power to exercise certain discretion, depending on the need of the individual, so long as it's not unreasonable and it doesn't violate the, the Home Rule Charter or the, the area in which this house is going to be in. We submitted a photograph of a house that's in back of this property that pretty much symbolizes exactly what we're putting up.
And just to reiterate, yeah, just to reiterate that when we bought, when we purchased the property in twenty twenty-two, the design plan that we have in place right now would have been able to be built at that time. The reason for the delay in starting this whole process was, again, illness, and we also had a home on lane one. Unfortunately, the home on lane one, we did end up selling it because the driveway was so narrow that, and the gentleman next door put up a fence, and my husband could not get out of the car. We literally could not get out of the car. So we decided that we would, you know, that was not a house that we could move forward in. And this property would be able to give us an opportunity to be able to live here full-time, manage his illness, me be able to take care of him. Property's small enough for both of us to manage. My best friend lives on the same street, and my other best friend from childhood lives on lane two. So I have some people there that can help me going forward. And so I can grow old there in this house as well. You know, like I said, I'm not asking for much, and I know that the rules changed from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, unfortunately. My timing was not great. But I, but I did speak when I purchased the property from the Realtor. We did have a home plan designed with the Stefano. There was something there, like I said, that did suit this property and was okay to be built on this property. Unfortunately, everything got changed in the process, in the, in the time being that we've owned the property. But we've continued to own it, and, and that's basically what I have to say. Unfortunately, it's just timing.
So Attorney Bevallag will tell you this. We, we have to go by date stamped because things have changed constantly.
Yes.
You know, especially in the last four years.
Yes.
So we, we can't rewind. We have to go when it was date stamped.
Yes.
Not want to sound heartless, but.
I understand that.
Mr. Chairman, just really, you know, I've explained all of those factors to my client in detail.
To show you that, no doubt. I'm sorry to interrupt. You want to keep going?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Alright. Steph?
I think the application lays it right out, and the added information as to the reasons and why have been expressed to the board.
Steph?
Steph just wants to note that it was determined with the building official that the original dwelling was nine hundred square feet and one story.
Okay. So the special use would read for the second story, amendment of arrangement. Dr. O'Neil?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I noticed the Architectural Review Board denied this. And am I correct?
Yes.
I wasn't there.
Breakwater Village, yes.
Been aware of it.
I am aware of it.
And they're very, as far as I'm concerned, very liberal as a second group. And the, the original working out of all of these restrictions in terms of size and shapes and dimensions and everything else, took a long time to come up with all this. And the purpose, obviously, was to be careful about overbuilding, oversizing. And the problem I always have is where you draw a line, like an inch or foot.
Understood.
So the, if the Architectural Review Board of this Breakwater Village can't support this, I, I, I find it very difficult. For me, it's where, if you were, you know, putting a ramp on, on the outside, that would encroach or something. I understand. I don't, you know, there are hardships. But the, the, the size doesn't fit with the lot, with the lot size.
Well, it did in twenty twenty-two when we purchased the property, and that's, that's that's.
As was said, there, there are changes as time goes by.
Yes.
A lot of changes in Narragansett over the course of time. And I, it's very difficult for me because the question is where you draw the line. And if it exceeds what? And if it exceeds what is supposed to be on that lot in terms of dimensions, I find it very difficult to support it. That's my opinion, and as I said, there's got to be a story behind a story why the Architectural Review Board, because as I say, they don't seem to be hard-nosed. We've dealt with a number of structures in there, so there's got to be a reason that they're not supporting your more recent version.
Are you asking me why? Or are you just?
No, maybe there is a reason that you.
Because they follow zoning in town in Narragansett, so they wouldn't approve something that they didn't think that, I guess, isn't now. So I'm applying for fifteen percent variance.
That's not exactly accurate, but in any case.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm amiss because I normally ask this. Why did they, did they give reason why they did not approve?
Typically, no, but.
I mean, typically, anytime there's a second story, they don't approve anyways.
For Breakwater Village?
Yeah.
That's not necessarily true. It typically is based off of the zoning relief. It's the dimensional relief in which it's usually based off.
Okay.
There are, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
We're pretty informal here.
There was a, I understand, but there was an approval of a previous structure, I think about a year ago, for the same reasons, needed dimensional variances for the health reasons, wheelchair accessibility and all of that. It had to, and it was approved not too long ago, I would say, within a year.
So why wasn't that, why isn't that being proposed if it's already, if they approved that?
No, a different person.
That was a different person.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not, I did not understand that.
I'm telling you in the past that the zoning board has granted that. Even though the, this board and the other board had denied it. I just want the board to be aware, because you do have, under the law, the discretion to exercise reasonableness. And that's what I'm asking.
Yep. So I have a couple of questions for staff. So the report talks about the dimensional regulations effective June one, two thousand and nine. They were updated a year or so ago, so I'm not sure which standards were.
Thank you, Mr. Friday. Yes, that's proprietary language that we use, and it has been updated as of January first, twenty twenty-four.
And then so if we're using the standards of January twenty twenty-four, if there was a fifteen percent modification, this would fall under that?
I don't believe height would fall. I don't think that they would make height. I believe, I did do the calculations for all of them, but I believe FAR and the sideyards would be able to be considered for fifteen percent modification. But I think they're just short of the height variance.
Yeah, I did, I did some notes, and I found the same. Sorry to jump on.
No, no, that's okay. If you're doing the numbers, that's fair.
Yeah, I found the same.
Okay. So, I mean, with the modifications, I'm okay about that. And then I had the same question about why the Architectural Review Board denied it, and it sounds like they're just following the details of what the dimensions is these days, which I think in the past, they were a little different now.
They were in the past. It just seems recently unless.
Different members shift.
You don't have to tell me that. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's all I had to.
Thank you. Tom? I'll come back to you, Doc. All right. Always do.
So if fifteen, if they were able to achieve relief under the fifteen percent on setbacks, how, and I heard you say, Brian, that they're just over with respect to height. Do you know what that number is?
I can figure it out really quick. I think.
I have the number if you'd like.
I'd like, actually, I'm sure you've got it, Mr. Benalock. I'd like to get it from staff.
I believe they could get to twenty-six point four five feet, and they're proposing twenty-six and a half feet.
Yeah, yeah. Mine was, my numbers were a little rough, because they were closer than my numbers.
And then they also, the inside of the FAR would vary with the modifications, huh?
I believe, yes, that would also, let me get back to on that, but I believe that.
Okay. And just because it's come up tonight, and I never really thought about it before, how many people are on the Architectural Review Board at?
Three.
I don't know.
Three.
Was this a three to zero vote, do you know, or a three, two to one vote, or do you have any knowledge of this?
Well, I have the paperwork that she's signed off on, and, but they, well, it's not like they denied, based on themselves, they denied just because of the zoning, I believe, because of these setbacks. And they said, what you do is you go to planning and then you go to zoning. And in the paperwork, it does say, you request a fifteen percent variance. And that's what they suggested to me, is to come to the board and request a fifteen percent variance, and that would give me the numbers that we had in the beginning. And that's all I asked for, was just to go back to what it was. And that was their suggestion, the art suggestion, and I have it documented on paper.
I'm sure you do. I'm just curious whether it was unanimous.
Because I've been in Breakwater Village since twenty eighteen, and I purchased a home there in twenty eighteen and sold it last year.
But you don't know whether it was unanimous or it was split.
They didn't document that in paperwork.
That's what. Thank you.
Mr. Cal, I have an answer for you. They would, in fact, be able to be a pro per 15 percent modification for FAR.
Thank you.
My numbers were good, so.
Say again?
My numbers were good.
Yeah.
Your numbers were great, Mark. I'm sure they were.
No, they were great.
They're also, they're on the, they're on the site plan also in the top middle, where the architect broke it down for us, which was helpful, because I didn't want to do math on the fly while I was reading this. So the, the second floor variance, obviously, is a different animal. I'm, personally, I don't have a problem with it. I saw the one you're talking about behind it. There's quite a few two-story buildings in there. I've previously said in meetings that there's no accounting for taste, and I gotta say, it's a beautiful building you're trying to build. I think it's great. My notes are to maybe help Doc get around on this. My understanding from our previous meetings about what the town council's trying to do was that that fifteen percent increase in all the setbacks and reduction in height was done to counteract their ability to ask for a fifteen percent variance by right or by, with notification. Is that all right?
No.
We submitted like four meetings. It was in all the books.
That's what they said.
That's what who says? Okay, sorry. In any event, this seems like it's exactly why we did this. They're not asking for too much. They're asking to go back to the way it was. I'm in favor of that. The one big problem we all had at those meetings, I don't know if this is going to be agreed to, was about the sideyard setbacks for fire. I think you'll go a long way if you stick with me here. You move the entire building to the north, two point three feet, all right? I'll show you what I'm talking about. This side of the building here is the right side elevation. If you look at the plans, because I poured over these, the left side of your building has two egress windows here and here, but they're in the stairwell, so you can't actually use a fire ladder to get in there. The right-hand side of your building has three on the second floor back here. So those would require, by the numbers the fire department gave us, nine point five feet of total clearance instead of the six point eight. So if you added two point three to this side and took it away from this side, I'd happily grant your variance for the stairs. That's the only way to get, the only way to get in anyway. And I think that would go a long way to, you know, help everybody get on board with, you're not creating a fire hazard, the fire department will be able to come rushing in.
There is one larger window.
Whereabout? Over here. Yes, on the first floor.
Yes.
Yes, that doesn't, so I've got notes on that, too.
Okay.
So the first floor window only requires seven point six feet of total setback, which if you take seven point six from eleven eight-five or whatever, this is eleven and a half or so, you've got more than enough. So as long as they can carry the ladder past your staircase, shouldn't have a problem getting you out that way. So that was the only note that I had about it. I think that helps everybody get there. So if you'd be willing to do that, I think that'd be helpful for you and everybody else.
There is not, and there is not a house built on the left side. That is an empty space, play area there, that is part of Breakwater Village, that they, is just a shed.
Awesome.
So there's nothing on that side.
Even easier to get.
And parking spaces, yes.
I also wrote in my notes that that looks like a shed.
Yes.
I said, there's no way somebody lives in that. It looks like shit. Okay, perfect. I was right.
Steve, how many feet are you recommending?
Two point three.
And that'll give, that'll give the fire setbacks.
Correct.
Okay. And this is just, this isn't just something frivolous for us.
I understand that.
I understand that.
Firemen in my family, I completely understand.
Especially down in there. So I have my comments, and I'll go back to staff. I did a ton of research on this ugly disease, and my questions are these, and they're just questions. They're not going to influence my, my, but you have stairs everywhere. Have you planned for ramps or, and interior-wise?
Chair, chair to up the stairs. To the seated chairs. And also, if you look at the first floor, the, there's that den right there. If my husband, that way he can get down the hallway to a bathroom and back to the den, so he doesn't have, it's just, you know, it's not just a bedroom. He can actually sit, you know, make that a space for him as well if he can get up the stairs, but I also do have the chair lift.
Yeah. So when I redid my house, I made all the doors thirty-six inch instead, and I know these are thirty inches.
This, I know this one's.
My wife is getting older, so.
This is a four-foot opening here as well.
She's also watching.
I didn't, I didn't say that. But it just with wheelchair.
Yes.
I know on paper they say thirty inches, but if you look at wheelchairs, thirty-six inches, much better. You would probably have to do a pocket door on the bathroom to do that, but.
Yes.
I'm just thinking down the road for you. And then my question was, have you thought about access egress from, you have the bedrooms are, this is on the first floor, but the living is on the second floor. Are you going to do a chairlift also?
Correct.
Okay. And again, I'm just, sometimes we get focused in the center, and I'm just asking questions down.
Yes, I work in the medical field, too, and I went through all of that, yes. Thank you.
All right. Staff, anything to read right?
No.
No? Doc?
Well, you know, it was, before this board, unless my memory is totally out, Breakwater here, one or two meetings ago, I think people were with us. And so it wasn't that far back where they, where they were to.
Proved, recommended.
To recommend a particular proposal, which had a number of variances, requested. And so what was publicly said here is they, you know, they just, they pumped to our zoning board, but they didn't there. They voted in favor of it. We can have a lot of hardships like this in that sort of thing. But in any case, moving right on.
So you mentioned the lot next door, just as a shed. Is that not a buildable lot then?
That's correct.
The property owner doesn't own that?
No, that is Breakwater Village owned, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's useful to know. And then the other observation I had when I was there is the site's wet, and it's wet with plants?
Well, it's also, yeah, it's also, so when the house was there prior, when they demolished that house, they, I think they took some soil with them, so unfortunately, the land is not flat right now, if you notice. It does definitely cut the grass.
So I don't know if that means you're going to have CRMC or DM, somebody needing to look at that.
I'm sorry?
I don't know if that means you're going to need CRMC or DM to look at that particular wetland.
So I, speaking with the struct, the engineer, pardon me, but I don't know everybody, technical terms, for the water runoff gentleman, he said that, I guess it would be not, would not be a problem. I don't know if that's what you mean.
It's, it's a different thing.
Okay. I think, personally, I think that because, if you notice that the land is completely flat here, when they tore the pobs down, they kind of scooped it out, so when you were there, you must have noticed that it definitely gets in.
Yeah, definitely.
So now everything kind of just settles there.
Yeah.
It's created a nice little sanctuary for the birds.
Staff's saying I'm right on that.
Yeah, it's, initially, it's not in the Towns Overly District for freshwater wetlands, and there's development on all corners of it. And when we look at the site plan, we notice that the contours direct right into that love spot. Staff doesn't have any initial concerns about it being a freshwater wetland or.
There was previously a house there.
And if there was a house there.
Yes.
It wasn't created.
It was a wet foundation.
It was a phenomenon. It was created by human mistake.
Yeah.
The individual who demolished the foundation, when he removed the foundation, he forgot to put the soil.
Yeah.
To make up the difference for the foundation, and that's why you have the depression there, and it's not an occasion by any act of God or nature.
Tom?
I have no further questions.
Steve?
I'm all set.
Okay. Yeah, when I did my rough numbers, the only thing that still fell out of the fifteen percent was height, and I'm really starting to worry about height creep in, all over town. It's not huge, it's a, I add a couple of inches, but it's just a red flag for me. Anybody in the public? Staff, anything you want to add? Anything from the board members? Do I have a motion on completeness?
Yeah, I'll get to the complete part. We'll give you the part. Move the application before us. Lundstrom Tax Assessor Platte M, Lot one sixty-seven dash two-two, is that another number there? Am I misreading?
One sixty-seven dash two-two, four.
Two-two-four, okay.
Or is it?
There's a, there's a.
Four is the street address.
Discomplete and in conformance of Town Comp, hence the plan.
Seconded on that?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anybody opposed? Unanimous? Do you have a motion of recommendation to the zoning?
So I'll make a recommendation that we affirmatively endorse this to zoning Lundstrom Tax Assessor Platte M, Lot one sixty-seven dash twenty-two.
No, it's Lot one sixty-two, one sixty-seven dash two-two. The address is four Holberg Street.
Four Holberg Street. Affirmatively, with the, the staff report dated April sixteen, with the correction on the date of the dimensional regulations, and with an additional condition that the house be moved.
Two feet? Two point three. Two point three feet. To the north.
Thanks, you've got a great math.
Two point three to the north. Okay. Counsel? You've gone through the conditions by staff. You're okay with those?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a seconded on the motion, gentlemen?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck. You've heard, you've heard some of the comments here.
Yes.
Be prepared for those as well.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a great day.
All right. Alajani Tax Assessor's Platte R two, Lot one four-four, one oh seven Conch Road. How badly did I do that?
Alajani.
Alajani?
It wasn't Alajani.
All right.
Sorry.
So existing condition, Lot one four-four is approximately twelve thousand one hundred square feet in size and is located in an R-ten zone. Existing twenty-six by thirty-eight foot three-bedroom dwelling, twenty-four by twenty rare deck with stairs and outdoor shower. Existing building coverage is approximately one thousand three hundred and eighteen square feet or ten point eight percent likely. Proposed construction of a twenty-eight by twenty second-story garage with a thirty by twenty driveway. Proposed building lot coverage will be approximately eighteen fourteen square feet or fifteen percent. All right. The proposed improvements associated with this project reflect in the site plan, the project as proposed did not comply with dimensional regulations, section six point four, as raryard setback proposed is seventeen point five feet. Twenty-four feet is required, and the proposed accessory structure height is twenty-one point one sixteen feet is the max. This project is not, not comply with height requirements under supplemental zoning, section seven point three. As proposed for accessory dwelling structure is over sixteen feet. It is on town water, but it is on-site waste treatment. All right. Ride M has issued a permit for a three-bedroom. Ride M has issued a permit for a three-bedroom onsite to this property in July 2023. The property pleasantly is at three bedrooms. Okay? The parking, uh, proposed parking area complies with section 0.9. The zoning ordinance, 200, 200 square foot per bedroom, the project proposal is 200, uh, 600 square feet onsite. Sectional, uh, relief is section 6.4, dimensional regulations. 6.5 foot rear yard setback variance, a 5.1 height variance. Sections 7.3 accessory structure, special use permit for accessory structure height. Okay? As noted in the project summary, the applicant is proposing to construct a detached two-story garage. Lot 144 is currently serviced by a three-bedroom onsite. It appears the second floor will be an additional living area, recreational room with a bathroom are proposed. If proposed second floor windows meet access egress criteria, that living area may be considered a fourth bedroom and would cause this property to be in violation of the approved onsite permit. Staff notes that it is unclear if access egress windows will be installed on the second floor in order to comply with the onsite design. This project shall be limited to no more than three bedrooms. So, uh, to facilitate, the construction of the garage, two-dimensional variances, sections 6.4 are required. 6.5 rear yard setback variance and 5.1 height variance for an accessory structure. A special use permit, section 0.3, will also be required. As proposed, accessory structure will be over 16 feet. Okay? Counsel, I gave you the Reader's Digest version.
Yes.
Can you let us know who you are, your role, and-
Attorney Dana Argente for the applicant. You gave a pretty good overview of the project. I will just add that I don't, in reading 6.4, I'm just a little confused on the staff's recommended area, the staff's calculation of, um, the variances that we need is, when I read 6.4, it says, for a single family in the R10, it's a maximum accessory structure of 18 feet and a maximum, uh, minimum rear yard, yard setback 20 feet. So I don't know if those, if I'm missing a table or-
So those are the old dimensional regulations?
Ah.
So the new, the new maximum height for an accessory structure is 16 feet?
Okay.
And the rear yard setback, was it 20 you said before?
Yeah.
It would have been, it would be 24.
Okay. Well then, it's correct. Other than that, uh, I don't know if the members have had a chance to review the plans. It's a 21, 2170 square feet. It's gonna be a 10, 10 feet of height on the first floor, and the second floor is gonna be nine foot two roughly. Just to address, uh, the staff's concerns, it's not going to be an ADU. There's just a bathroom on the second floor for recreation purposes. There is no egress window, and the applicant would be happy to propose as a condition that it might be. But there's no intent to have, to have people sleeping or living or renting in that room. It's solely for our recreational use. We built a smaller house on the lot than we could have, and we, to keep in the sort of environment of the feeling of Great Island. And we, we intended to, always intended to build a garage with a little bit of room upstairs so that we could basically exercise. Because the basement in the house is five feet.
So the concern we usually have is, you know, the people come before us, like yourself, hey, we live there, this is our home. We have no intentions. It's the next person who comes in and doesn't care. So, so typically in these, like, home offices or these type of situations, this counsel will tell you, for us, the key is access egress windows. If they're not access egress, then it can't be a living space.
They won't be.
Want to go back to the design picture? Because they look like they are. Now you will, you will, you said you-
I'll tell you, if they are on the design, we'll have them changed.
Okay.
We'll have them changed.
Okay. All right.
Because that was never the intent in the first place. Other than that, it's, it's designed by the same engineer that, uh, or excuse me, architect that designed the main house, so it's gonna match very nicely with that. As you can see from the pictures, it's gonna look very good. Has the copper weather vane, shingle flares at the base. And, uh, that's pretty much it regarding the actual look of it. Obviously, we have two variances and one special requirement based on the height. Just based on the actual, uh, recreation space as compared to, uh, the ground floor. This was kind of the minimum height that we needed for that. So that's why we're doing it. And we understand that we have to let it zoning for that as well.
Counsel, do you know what the existing height of, of the house is?
Yes, I, I might be on the second.
No, I missed it on the second. I just, I just had the dimensions of the proposed and have the home. Unless I missed it, which is probably not. I didn't have an elevation.
It'd be easy to find out. But I wasn't anticipating the question.
Well, I'm not gonna lie, if, uh, a five-foot height variance is, is big.
I do not have the height.
Okay, thank you, counsel. I'm sorry, you're off. Keep going.
That was, that was pretty much all we have for now. I just wanted to address that, that portion of the concern that it would be an accessory dwelling unit. Again, as a, as a condition, that making it a condition, we would be happy to take egress window out if it was put in there. I don't believe we, we've never requested it, so, um, something that just wasn't in there.
Thank you. Dr. O'Neil?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, the rear yard side back setback. Here it is. You, you got a pretty good sized lot there, and you're putting the garage less than the requirement. Why is that necessary? You're asking for a six and a half foot setback variance?
I think the question is, counsel. You've got all this space, can you move this closer to the house and not have the, the rear foot, rear setback?
I understand, and honestly, looking, I understand the question. Looking at it, to be honest with you, if it's some, if it's not something that I'm just missing, and the engineer, uh, and the landscape, and the architect, uh, did catch it and I didn't?
No.
I don't see any reason why unless-
I had the same question because your septic is here.
It's, it's the well.
It's the well.
But you don't want to dig that close to the well.
That's why I was gonna, I knew the septic was here, I was looking for the well.
It's, I know you don't use it, but the construction next to an abandoned well like that would be difficult without you filling it with concrete, which is an expensive process. I, I get why you put it there, which is what I'm trying to say.
That makes sense.
That's what I meant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, uh, the second thing is, you know, we talked in here, people come in and ask for a few more inches because, on a reason. We're talking about if we compete one inch behind variance, which is, for me, those are big numbers. The other thing I would-
We have competition.
I would raise, I, in terms of, of, what was implied earlier here, you know, if you sit here for a while, the properties change hands. And if I bought that property, I, I would remember this conversation, and I would expect to, to use that area above the garage as a bedroom. The, the difficulty we have is, this is Great Island, and, and, uh, unfortunately, a beautiful body of water around it that's contaminated. So it's a three-bedroom onsite system at the present time, and, uh, I would be very uncomfortable about okaying this with a bathroom in there. For two reasons, obviously, it takes away from usage as a, as a bedroom for future, you're not gonna use it for, for the, for the future. But also, it, uh, it means more flushes for a three-bedroom system. So those are my, my thoughts on this.
And just to address concerns regarding that, um, number one, as you indicated, this is Great Island. It's not Eastward Look, so the chances of it notwithstanding the fact that we'd be willing to make it a written condition that wouldn't be an ADU, um, this just isn't quite the rental forum that Mary Hansen's used to, unlike Eastward Look or Old Eastward or even up here.
I lived there in college.
Yeah. Where, where?
On the island.
Great Island?
Yep.
In a, in a, in a barn?
I have the coolest address. Moose Island Road, Great Island, Rhode Island. Doesn't get any cooler than that, man.
Yep. And so if I can respond, Dr. O'Neil, um, unless there's more people living in the house, then the number of flushes would be about the same, wouldn't it? So, so we don't have someone living there, then-
Right, right. But, and I, I, you're an honest, direct person. I believe everything you're saying. But if you sit here a while, these properties change hands.
Understood, I, you can't control it.
And, uh, the bathroom's already there. And a three-bedroom system, you know, with time, they don't work as well. So that's the reason that I, that I, that I bring that up. The point that you made that I, went by me there in terms of, um, what point did you make just before we, we talked?
Rental.
Rental, rental, yeah. You have family living there, I mean, it doesn't have to be, that's the point I was gonna make. It doesn't have to be rental property. You can have family, you can, you know, if you have a big family and the kids would love to be out there, raise hope.
Well, additionally too, this would not be able, you wouldn't even be able to make that an additional bedroom unless you upgraded the system to DM. So it's, it's-
Well, yeah. Reality is that, that it is-
Legally-
Our, our experience has been different.
You're throwing a word there. Throwing a word legally, and, and also, the other thing is, there are other options. Granted, there's a well sitting over, but there are other options how to do this. And I, I'm sure you thought about them with your architect, a way to accomplish the same thing without, without these, these little, not barriers, but hurdles, like is a better, is a better word.
So I think we would be happy to discuss with our architect the moving of that, um, the moving of the structure southward if, you know, obviously, if it's not completely cost prohibitive like you indicated. I can tell you that our architect will be present as an expert at the zoning board hearing. So any kind of suggestion that the zoning board gives, we can consult with him on that and determine if it's feasible at that point. He just kind of gave us these plans to present to you tonight prior to zoning. We didn't want 16 experts here for a, a somewhat non-hogging.
Right, I mean, but you have a pretty good sized lot, and that structure's not that big. And if you look around there, maybe you'll be overly simplistic. Move that in, in different areas and, in any case, there's a way to do it.
If it's feasible, we're totally-
Excuse me, I'm parking. Thank you. The, the, the height variance that you're talking about would be eliminated, you know, by doing it, you know, doing it on other ways. Floor is yours.
And we'd be happy to consult. I don't know that the height variance is going anywhere. It's the issue, or at least our petition for it.
There are ways to eliminate it.
Yeah, so maybe, Dr. O'Neil, if you can, I mean, I don't know what those ways are. I'm not an architect.
You'd have to discuss it with your architect, but there are ways to do it.
We can't get involved in the-
Fair enough.
Rupert?
So I have, uh, some of the same concerns as Dr. O'Neil about the, uh, the going, becoming a, um, accessory dwelling unit or rental property with bedrooms in the future. And the same thing in the side yard. I, I'd be, um, comfortable even with it being until the side yard setback standard of 20 feet. But, um, even the old setback, the old standard for the height was 18 feet, so that, it's still a three-foot height variance for the, for the second floor. But, yeah, I don't have, don't have any other questions.
Tom?
This is not directly on point, but you said something that raised the question in my mind. So we knew that, I'm just curious, is if this garage was attached by a breezeway, and I'm not suggesting that they build a breezeway, but if it was attached by a breezeway, what would the height restriction be on that garage?
30.
Thank you.
I had the same objection.
That is typically what happens in this town when this board or any other board says no to a height variance under a section accessory building, they build a breezeway. I'm typically not in favor of building a breezeway because one, it's a workaround, and two, I think it's a little bit ugly. It adds to the, you know, surface runoff, you got more impervious surface. So I, I'm fine with the height variance. I understand why everybody's in consternation about it. But a home gym's great, obviously, I haven't seen one. I'd like to put one in my basement one day, but I'll never get there. I, I, I don't want you to move it closer to the well because I generally don't like people pouring concrete into a 200, 300-foot hole in the ground because there's all kinds of chemicals in concrete. So I see why you held it there. So I'm satisfied. If others aren't, I'm, I'm sure you could perceivably in front of the zoning board, move it somewhere further back. Then you end up with more driveway and more impervious surface. So I, I think you've done a good job attempting to get what you want, and I wish you luck.
Thank you. So if I could just make another comment. Right now, uh, just behind where, this is gonna help or hurt, I don't know. But just behind where we have the proposed garage, there's a red maple, which is an indigenous species. And to the left of the garage, there's a Norway maple, which we don't care about, it's an invasive species. So what we're trying to do is, is preserve that red maple that's behind the shed, that shed's gonna go away, and have the garage something close to what, what we, what we need in order to be able to stand up in it and, and be able to, to lift weights or what have in there. So that, that's the rationale for the placement. Thank you.
I, I had similar concerns. I'm not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't blow this up for the side setback. And we've had more, more, we've had lesser reasons to approve one of the setbacks. Your willingness to go with the, uh, with the reduced windows for no access egress, I like, and, and to actually be restricted for no ADU, I like. I still do have a concern with the bathroom, but I'm gonna defer to staff. I mean, I balance this whole thing too. If you're not increasing the number of people in the household, are you really increasing the burden on, on the septic system? But it is another bathroom.
I'm not an OWTS specialist. I'm not entirely sure what the actual effects to that, to that nature would be. So I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So OWTSs are, um, they are, they are designed by bedroom.
Correct. Right.
And not, not bathroom.
Right, and they typically are overdesigned.
But that being said, Mr. Brantley is correct, you know, that if it were to ever be another bedroom, they would need, they would need to have either an upgrade or a new system installed.
Okay. So, um, the one, the one thing that I do have a concern is five feet. I mean, but we have height creep like there's no tomorrow. And, you know, I'm looking, you know, you got 10 feet underneath. Even with an SUV, you can come down a little bit more, maybe, you know, I don't know, cathedral ceiling and stuff and bring it down a little bit more. But, you know, even though the old regs would have been eighteen feet, five feet, I just, that's huge. I mean, we've declined a foot. It's just, everything is getting higher and higher. And, you know, you have a right to do on your property, but there is also a responsibility to your butters, to your neighbors and stuff. And height starts to block sun, it starts to block views, it starts to block a lot of things. It starts to really change the dynamics of the community. So I can get past all the other stuff with the conditions that you are willing to go to. I, I do have a concern on the height. And I, I do believe that there are ways to mitigate it and still get what you want.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Brady. I think I, we're sensitive to the butters, which is why we went out and solicited letters from them. And that's, I think that's included in the application. And we're also sensitive to trying to keep the character of Great Island as close to what it is when we bought the house. And so we'll go back to the architect and see if there's a way to, to reduce the amount of the variance that, that we're asking for. But, you know, in order to, as I said, for an adult to stand there, not that I'm, I'm shorter than an average adult, but for a normally sized, normal heighted adult to stand there, there's gotta be, there's gonna be some variance, I think, that's gonna have to creep into the, into the application.
I'm not giving you any, any assurances and stuff, but typically, you know, if you, if you're trying to make an effort, people tend to look at that. So those are my comments. Redirect, Doc?
Yeah, you can tell I'm uneasy about it. And it's beautiful architecturally. It's too high, it's too much, and it just, I just can't support it for, it's, if it was a kitchen or something. It's something you'd like, an exercise room. And the garage in Rhode Island, you know, most garages are full of surfboards and whatever, not cars.
Any other problem with that?
No, there's not a problem with that, it's good storage. But, but the idea of variances for, for something that's not critical, kitchens, et cetera, that are essential for living, this is something you would like, and I understand, Doc. As I said, it's architecturally looks very nice. But for me, it's, it's not a necessity to have that many variances, not much height, I can support it.
Rupert? Any redirect?
Nothing else is said.
Tom, redirect?
No redirect, no further questions at this point.
Okay. Steve?
I'm also good.
Yeah, thank you.
Staff?
I'm on, I'm on staff.
Okay, okay, okay. Anybody in the audience, I, okay. So then I need, I need a motion for completeness?
All right, move the application before us. I'm gonna screw up your name. Hologenean, tax accessory. Is that close?
Yeah, you got it.
Tax accessory plat R two lot one four four is complete and performs the town comprehensive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
All those opposed?
I agree.
Unanimous decision? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move the application before us. What's that to say together? I Asian, uh, Genian, uh, tax accessory plat R two lot one four four negatively with the staff's comments, recommendations, et cetera, dated April sixteenth. And reviewing specifics, the dimensional regulations, rear yard setback variance, height variance, special use permit, these are all obviously outlined by the staff's letter. And then reviewing the standards to be met and granting variances, number three, in that category, number eight. Talking about hardships. And then down to special use permits, number two, special use permits. Capital goals, development standards and everything, obviously, we're asking for variances from those standards. And we, let's see. You guys have done the planning, the parking, et cetera. That's not an issue. Planning Board review, compliance with all applicable development form of standards, number one, obviously, that's not the case. Number two, compatibility with surrounding land use, in my opinion, that's, that's not compatible. Adequacy, uh, such disposal for the present, that is adequate. And then number sixteen, availability of alternatives to the proposed project. I do feel strongly there are alternatives. So that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of negative recommendation to the planning, to the zoning board, signified by aye? All those opposed to a negative recommendation to the zoning board?
Nay.
Nay. So motion fails.
So we need a motion too?
We need a new motion.
So, Mr. Chairman?
I got it up.
No, I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out who seconded, you got it faster than us.
Sorry.
Rupert, thank you.
Rupert, sorry.
All right, and it went two, three? Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, with respect to project summary for Hologenean Tax Accessory Plat R two lot one forty-four, location one oh seven Contra Road. Recommend that the, this board support a positive recommendation to the zoning board, incorporating the report, the staff report dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and granting the relief requested under section six point four for six and a half feet for a year, rear yard setback variance and a five-foot-one-inch height variance. And in section N, to issue a special use permit for an accessory structure height under section seven point three, subject to the conditions that are included in numbers one through seven. Did I hear you say that you were agreeable to a de-restriction with respect to accessory deal? With a de-restriction for preventing, precluding the use of the room above the garage for an accessory dwelling?
They also agreed to remove the access egress windows in exchange for light windows.
That's correct. With the understanding that the windows on the second floor would not be access egress windows.
Yes.
And that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do you accept a friendly motion that they seek an alternative to reduce the height?
I, I would encourage them to minimize the height. Having said that, it's clearly my understanding that the garage height is going to be less than what the height of the house is, correct? Yes.
So is that a condition that the garage height is less than the house height?
I don't wanna, encouraging larger garages than they've already thought of. It'd be no more than what they've got.
No, I'm just saying, it will be less than the height of the house.
It would be no more than what they've proposed here. It's gotta be less than the house.
A lesser of the two.
And I would encourage them to do more if they can.
All right. Do I have a motion on that?
I did move.
Sammy, do I have a second, I'm sorry?
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Mr. Brady? Mr. Brady. Mr. Callahan, I would recommend that you strike condition one, as it limits the construction of the accessory use to, or accessory dwelling to sixteen feet.
Which I would be more comfortable with. It.
Well, then we'll strike. Then we would strike, so the amendment would be to strike condition one in the staff report in two conditions, two percent. Two through eight, excuse me.
You've read those and reviewed those, counsel?
Yes.
So, Mr. Callahan, two through eight plus the two that you added?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Negative.
I'm on state.
I'm state? All right. We have three, one, and one. Same objections are probably gonna come up in zoning, and the height is gonna be the issue.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for, for the others, appreciate that. We understand what you want to try to do, but the height is gonna be essential.
Thank you for the feedback, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, so we are. Get all comfortable, gentlemen. All right, so we have. So we're gonna go back to zoning ordinance text amendment to allow mixed use in B and B, general business zone. And let the staff open that discussion.
All right, good evening.
Welcome back from vacation.
Thank you.
You look well rested, no sharp legs.
Head rested and ready, right?
Yep.
Okay, so if we could just move to the next slide. Thank you, all righty. So we were given, we were given some time with the town council. For those of you who may not have been on the board at the time, the, I'll just back up to tell you, tell everyone in the room where we are. So we put the, taking the Wayback Machine, the Fort Worth Housing Trust Collaborative, a couple of years ago, wanted to put together a mixed-use zoning ordinance, and they worked on it, worked on it, worked on it. They got a draft together, they gave it to the planning board. This sort of happened, you know, the fall of twenty-three into the spring and late winter of twenty-four. And the planning board reviewed, reviewed the draft, made changes, made a recommendation to the, made a recommendation. That recommendation sat dormant for a little while, and when it was, there were no changes to it. There was no, it didn't go to council, there was no timeline issue with it. It just, it didn't, it didn't go to council, my understanding is. And that was, by the way, that was also when the previous director retired, there was a lot of moving parts that happened in twenty twenty-four.
Including a whole change from the state.
Oh, yeah, and a whole change over from the state, sure. So an election year and that, everything. So, but just prior, just prior to the election, we, the previous council asked, asked us to put it back on. So we did, and we put it on, and we didn't want to split the, we didn't want to split the difference and have one council, potentially one council do a first reading and public hearing, and the second council have to approve it. So we put it on for November, the new council said, oh, wait, we need more time. So they moved it to December second. At that, between that time that we put it on and December second, we did a quick re-review. And we, I realized that the draft that had been used by the Fort Worth Housing Trust Collaborative and reviewed by the planning board, the draft, so what we do is we use an old draft ordinance, right, and we're gonna make changes. But the ordinance that was used as the template was the, an old ordinance, because our ordinance changed in twenty twenty-four. And so when I went back to look at all of, just by way, look at all of the approved uses and specially approved uses that were being appro, proposed, I noticed there were some changes, there were some errors. Because some of them had been removed, some of them had been changed from a special permit to permit, and I said, okay, this is an issue. And, and then the more we looked at it internally, we had a sub, subcommittee look at it, and said, okay, this is a problem. So at that December second meeting, we agreed with the council that we would do, we asked them to do a workshop with us because they were also very confused and concerned with the ordinance itself. They wanted something streamlined and clean, easy to use, for mixed use. So we did have a workshop with them, the planning board had a workshop with them on December, January twenty-seventh. And then from there, we had our, we had the continuation of the public hearing, which was February third. And at that time, we agreed at the workshop that we would continue that public hearing. So on February third, we continued that public hearing. That continuation, that public hearing at the time, we, okay, that's, that was also before the twenty twenty-five legislation came out, or was coming out. That we said, okay, we can, if we give ourselves enough time, also before the fourteen amendments came out, when we felt we were gonna have more time, we, we moved it, the public hearing, to May nineteenth. And if you back up yourself from the May nineteenth meeting, we would have had to have a recommendation by tonight in order to have the ad go out in the paper by Friday, in order to make the May nineteenth public hearing. Since February second, or February third, we have had, so we've had multiple changes internally with the town. We've had, you know, we all know the fourteen amendments, which will, could very easily affect this. But also, the state, the state released their housing package. And there were eleven mills, I think initially, there's, I think there's a few more now. In all honesty, I picked that up today. I was out, as we all know, I was out last week. So I picked that up today, and just as a really quick cursory, before I left, I gave you a memo, which suggested to you that you need to, you should be asking the town council for a continuance on this. And in that memo, I flagged four house bills that could potentially affect mixed-use zoning. Today, I found three more, just in my afternoon look of the book that Mr. Patron was, I carry a lot of buy goods. Mr. Patron, yeah, Mr. Patron. So I found three more bills, just in an hour and a half look today, that could very much affect this mixed-use zoning. So Mr. Friday and Dr. O'Neil are part of a subcommittee that have been working, graciously working with me on this. And we have given you the draft of what we have so far, but that does not include any of this. And, and by the way, it doesn't include any potential conflicts that could occur with the fourteen amendments, of which that public hearing opens on May fifth. All of that being said, I don't believe the mixed-use ordinance is right. So I would suggest to you, as I did in the memo, that you ask the town council at that public hearing, which is scheduled for May nineteenth, and I'm sure they're aware of it already, maybe they're even watching right now, that we're not, we're, we're not ready, because we don't know what's coming down from the state. And some of this has a really big potential to, to drastically augment what we're doing. Just as a quick look, like a mixed-use overlay zone, or there's a thirty percent mixed-use requirement on the urban services boundary, the, the mixed use through administrative subdivision for oversized lots. So there's a lot of additional moving parts, other than the moving parts we, we had originally had created with the draft ordinance and other than the ones that were handed to us through the fourteen amendments. So that being said, I'm, we could do a page turn tonight, but I'll be looking at it for the first time as you.
So I've been mulling this over. And lack of communications with the town council, and I'm not gonna get into whose fault, why, whatever. But I think the lack of communications has been devastating for the town. And it, it doesn't do anybody good. And I've committed to myself to try to change this, regardless of what comes back the other way. From this board going there, I, I concur with you. I, I don't think this is ready for a lot of reasons, not because of lack of due diligence on our part, it's just too many moving parts. Can we legally send them, rather than waiting for that meeting, can we send them notification ahead of time stating, this is what we intend to do, and this is why we intend to do it? And educate them that this isn't a lack of preparedness on our part, it's just the opposite. We've been changing and changing and changing with the changes. But that, as you well did document it here, specific changes that are coming, let them know these changes are coming and at this point in time, and the fourteen ordinances on top of that. And that our intent is to request that we continue this and give us an opportunity to look at where those end up settling out and what those impacts are, giving it back to the subcommittee to come back to us with something a little bit more prepared, solid, and hopefully get it in ahead of the changes coming. Is that?
Yes.
I would, I, I would like to do that rather than just ask for it at that time. I'd like to give, I'd like to really try to open up communications with them. And, and even overdo it if we have to on this end, and really spell out in detail. And let them know, we're prepared to come with something, we have it, but our recommendation is not because of these recommendations. Is that something to the office?
Oh, absolutely, so, so for what you're referring to is like a memorandum to the, yes, absolutely, yes, that would be done. And absolutely, so Mr. Brady and I can work on that and just lay out why, why it is.
Okay.
Why, why it is we're submitted, and that would be, I mean, that would just be good form.
Absolutely.
To inform them, you know, for the meeting and what we're asking them to do ahead of time.
My feeling is not only to open up the communications, but to also try to educate them, because I think a lot of the stuff they're doing, they don't understand the ramifications of what they're doing and the implications of what they're doing. And you saw a little bit of frustration from them last night in trying to deal with basements and cellars because they have the fourteen sitting out there and all of this, and starting to kind of fall over itself. I'd like to make it educational as well. So are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah.
No, I'm going down more, Doc?
Well, yeah, and the point that you made, X number of the bills. Well, yeah, and the point that you made, X number of the bills, three more, what, whatever you got them.
Oh, yeah, I had them for a while, Dr. O'Neal, I just don't know until today.
How many more next week or next, when, when do they finish introducing bills? That isn't until the summer?
No, they.
So they finished session, they aimed for before July. And they've actually been very good at that in recent years. But in having lived this in my office, it's less about more bills, more about the amendments because we may expect H five, just by example, H five, seven, nine, six to pass, but if there's tweaks, that would affect us directly. So it's best, and Jill, all the credit goes to her for identifying these coming down the pipeline, best to sit tight because that's going to directly affect the work product that goes from you to the council.
And that's just going to frustrate them. So.
Well, that's just too damn bad. The, the educational piece, I think is a good one. That, what you described to us, this multiplicity of bills coming along and coming along is why we're having this problem, trying to sit down and consolidate, this is where we're at, this has to be added, this could be subtracted, whatever. So they understand that we're not procrastinating here. We can't, you can't keep changing things every time they meet. I mean, they don't want that either. So, so is there a way that we could, in the memo, maybe it'd be too long, wouldn't be a memo, it'd be a book, you know, to explain that?
I'm running out of binders, I can't do any more.
Is there a way so they would, if they want to understand, to understand why this has taken time here, that we can't draw a line and say as of April first or July first, this is, this will.
Absolutely, Dr. O'Neal. I think, if I'm hearing correctly, that the memo should explain not only the house bills that are, you know, the general assembly bills that are coming down, I always point to house with the senate companion bills, that are coming, coming down the pipeline, but also our internal changes that may be conflicted, as well as the ordinance that we put together, that is, you know, that we've been working very, you know, the three of us have been working very diligently to streamline and try to make it user friendly. I think that was the, that was the overarching, that was the overarching takeaway for me anyway, with, when we met with the zoning board, which was make it, you know, make it easy, make it usable, make it functional.
Sure. Yeah, that was, that was the goal from the beginning. People want to do this. Rupert?
I just was going to echo, I mean, when legislative session started and the first couple of bills that were in the speaker's package and the rest, mixed use ordinance, and I looked at what we were doing, I'm like, okay, we're okay with these. But then more have been added that really would need dramatic changes to what we've been working on, so I think.
Tom?
No, I, I agree with sending a note. I just, as a practical matter, if you look at it from the council's point of view, May fifth, they have, have to open the public hearing on the fourteen commandments. They also, they also have a, scheduled the, I think, the public hearing for the first shot at the budget from August.
Yeah.
The council president made clear last night that all those who are interested in the fourteen commandments want to keep their powder dry because budget's going to basically predominate that meeting. I don't know where this would fit in in anybody with schedule for this. So I think it's a practical matter, it's a, it's a, would be welcome on their part anyway.
Right, and Mr. Callahan, so that's May fifth, May nineteenth, they, they continued again a public hearing that we had from February, back to May nineteenth, of which when this would go forward. So if they don't get out of the budget, they're still going to be in the fourteen amendments, they're going to be in our twenty twenty four ledge, and then they're going to be in mixed use through. We're all going to be swimming in zoning.
Yeah.
Back to the.
Let me give Steve a first shot.
No worries. I'll be honest with you, I was planning on abstaining from this vote anyway because it started before me and I haven't had time to go back and read the minutes. I, I don't even know if there's minutes from workshops, is, is it minutes from that one?
Yeah, so Sarah, Sarah Maison has done the minutes because it's a town to council meeting.
All right, excellent. So I'll find those and bring myself up to speed, but I just.
And you can watch it too.
Yeah, good. I prefer that, yeah. I can at least play the audio in the background while I'm driving around doing jobs and stuff. So I, I'm unprepared on this one, I apologize for that. But it seemed, from reading the first page, I was like, I don't know, it doesn't seem like anybody's prepared. So I'm sure you guys are prepared. I don't, and you staff, I don't want to insinuate anything, but.
Well, it's, every time we get prepared, the world changes.
It changes, yeah, so I figured this might happen.
And the big push that we, we wanted, and this is something that was passionate with me even before I knew that the public collaborative was coming, is to make something that developers would want to. Because you and I are on the same page, everybody, we know, we recognize, you know, the, the state steps in and says, well, you have to have this much affordable housing. And so the pressure is on communities to do that. And the only ones we can pressure is, are the developers. And the developers are like, well, we can't cover these costs. And the state isn't covering anybody's costs. So the goal for this was to look at it and say, okay, can we create a profit stream, another revenue stream? And, you know, we really, this board has been passionate about really not just saying and putting something on paper about affordable, but actually making it a real thing. And so we really wanted this to be something that, that developers would cling to because, and make it happen. And so we really tried to make it as user friendly as possible. Depending on some of the, the fourteen commandments that come down, some of those changes will actually eradicate any leverage we have as a community for any kind of affordable. And I just find that devastating. But I thank you all for your support because this is really what I wanted to do. And I, not only to clarify that this is ready, but I really want to, on our part, force it if we have to, communication but education, back up to the, to the council. And that's really what we'll do with this.
I just want to hitchhike on the communication. I think the Fort Worth Housing Collaborative is very frustrated that this has taken forever. And I think it's important to communicate back to them why.
Well, I'm going to jump on that because I called them repeatedly to get somebody on our subcommittee and they said they weren't interested. So we're on our own here. And they can say whatever they want, but I'm going to take offense to that one. Okay? So what do we need to give you? First of all, legally, do we have to get something to them legally to keep us in compliance with whatever the procedures were here? I mean, this was a scheduled hearing. You know, I don't want us, you know, legal bind.
Yes, it was.
Because you would have had to have, if we had something, you'd have to get our approval, approval tonight so you can get it posted, right?
Yes.
So.
You would need, and you'd be asking for extension time, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and you can do that through the memo, if I have the memo to Sarah by Friday.
All right. All right, you let me know and I'll be in.
Yeah, I'll draft it.
Okay.
I'll get it for you.
Thank you. So you good with this?
Yes, sir.
And I did, I did mention it to, was it Bob or James? Might have been Bob.
I think so.
A few, a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we could see the writing on the wall, going, we, we could, just couldn't.
Yeah.
We just didn't have the bandwidth to do, to meet the forty five day deadline for the fourteen amendments and, I mean.
He's, he's the sponsor of one of the mixed use bills.
He, he's the sponsor of a couple of these bills, yeah.
All right. All right, so Nick will, Nick knows what we want to try to accomplish.
If there's any issue, Jill, we can.
Okay.
As long as we have a consensus of the board.
So you need a motion to request an, an extension from the town council?
I think so. I don't even know if you're on for a vote, let's look.
You need a motion, so move it.
You are on a recommendation, it is on your, the town council, you initially make a recommendation that the town council extend the timeframe.
Okay. Do, should, does that have to be a date defined on their part?
I'm sorry?
Does that have to be a date defined?
They will have to continue it to a date certain, you don't have to pick that. You could suggest to them, and I would suggest to you, that you go out until. One more time?
September?
Yes, at a minimum.
No, I'm not joking.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, because this is, these aren't, these aren't the only changes, you know, mixed use, there's, I mean, you have other things, the pipeline, you have the collusionary zoning, you have, you have the urban renewal zone, you have your subdivision regulations. I mean, you, there are so many things, not, that, those are, those are ones that are being drafted right now, that are almost ready for you. Not including the changes from twenty twenty five that may create more, more work.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, you could suggest to them late summer, early fall, and then let them look at their calendar.
All right.
Mr. Check, I just have one moment.
Yeah, please.
Anywhere beyond the session.
Well, I'm looking at the, it's not just the session, it's not the session. We've got to get past the fourteen. Because whatever their decisions are, those have to come back to us, what was sent us was not a legal ordinance. So those have to be formulated in a legal ordinance and come back to us. We now have to have hearings again and implement it. So this is, yeah, it's the law, man, and nobody's looking at it. And it, it starts to mount. Plus, we have other, we have six subdivisions, guys. There's six subdivisions sitting out there, and these guys are spending money. They, we need to get these going and get them through, so. I'm quickly, while they're concerned, we have on its E three, we have an asterisk, we can get to this, is the priorities for the planning board discussion, possible actions, not that one, is the, I thought it was on this.
Subdivision, right?
No, so possible topics for study?
That's it. E three is it.
All right, so E three is our, our possible actions for this. I want to, I want to postpone that action because I want Steve to have time to go through the list and, and figure out what we. Steve, what we did was, when we came in, just to give you some background, one of the things that I wanted to do, and it really came out of the amazing work that the subcommittees did on the twenty twenty four stuff, is to look at and have this board be something more than just variances and dexterships, and really look at issues within the community, whether they were in our doable scope or not, and break into subcommittees and, and work on those, and actually come back with proposals. And some of them may be just, like, one of the things we talked about was flight controls, you know, especially along the beachfront and stuff like that, stuff that's going to be up at, at state level, but if we can get a ball rolling. So I want to give you a chance to get the list, go through it, see what you would like to do and be part of. And then go from there, so.
I appreciate that. I've got the list now, so I'll go through it.
Go through it, and if there's something that you see that's not there, that you really think, hey, guys, this is critical, put it on and we'll work it in.
All right. Seems extensive, I doubt a bunch. You have twenty out here, that's a pretty good start anyway. I don't want to overwhelm us with thirty some committees away.
Well, some of this stuff is underway, and, you know, some of the stuff, we grouped them. I thought Tom and Rupert did an amazing job of grouping them into, into little packets, buckets, thank you. The Tom, coding Tom's buckets, and so.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're ready, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so what would you like us to do?
Yes, Jill and I just talked about some of the nuance of it. So it's a request, a motion to request an extension from the town council, excuse me, a continuance of the matter by the town council to a date certain that they will pick.
Okay.
And to the extent an extension of time is needed from this board is granted.
Okay. Can we recommend a date, a month, or at least a time for any?
Jill's memo may give a suggestion on that.
Yeah, late summer, early fall. And then, then they, it's only, it's only, that's only three days.
Yeah.
You know, it's the last date in August, when the first you get.
How about, how about late fall?
Yeah, I wouldn't do it.
I wouldn't do summer.
September.
I wouldn't even do September.
Yeah, I think you're right.
You got back to school, you got all of that kind of stuff, they've got stuff.
And these, these bills that are here, like, some of those changes, working that into our stuff, it's going to take time.
Time for the dust to settle on that. All right, so what he said, do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Five.
Okay.
The other thing I would mention in a complimentary way, that, you know, having sat here on the planning board for many years, a lot of times this came, comes up from time to time, why don't we do some real planning besides just hearing the stuff that comes in? The difficulty you have right now, I think, is unless I'm missing something here, I mean, this is like the overloaded ship here. We got, we got a planning department that's on overload, we have a town council that doesn't, I may be selling them short, doesn't realize the workload that is related to all this. And, and the idea of doing much planning in a true sense right now, in top of this, I mean, all those meetings, you know, you guys had, I missed one because I was at another meeting, at another location. But, you know, there, there's a point where, listen, if anybody else wants to come, this is voluntary. When I, when I was working my fanny off, I never worried, I worked seventy eight hours a week, that's the way I worked, foolish, but I did it. But at this point in time, this is voluntary. And these people have a limit in terms of their capacity. So I think unless I'm missing something here, you know, we've got these fourteen amendments here, we're going to go back all, because they have to be revisited again, go back over all those hours, have people speak at all these, and then continue, as you just said, we have what, six subdivisions coming, coming around? I, I just, to make my comments here about, there's a, there's a point where, you know, you carry so much on your shoulders and that's about it, so. I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
Can I just pick up just one quick point from what you just said, Doc? Joe, what is the schedule for putting the comp plan together?
Well.
I mean, have you, have you got something that's not waiting?
No, because we don't, because I'm waiting for the town council to approve the capital improvement budget, of which will allow us to hire a consultant. I know the timeframe in which we have to have it done, which is September twenty twenty nine, is the absolute drop dead deadline. September twenty twenty seven is our ten years. And then we have, the, the law right now says we have up to two years after the deadline. After that, we can't use the, the comp plan for any useful decisions.
And you'd want to get the consultant on board to help design the process for.
Yes.
Public.
It would be great to go out to RFP this summer.
Right, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And it's normally, last time it took how long, the F?
Last time it took five years.
Yeah, okay.
So we are in an expedited process, yes.
Thirty two extra meetings.
And thirty, and then, yes, Dr. O'Neal.
Four hour meetings, I remember.
Yes, you're right, it was thirty two, it was, yeah, it was about thirty two meetings in five years, extra meetings.
So we did initiate the committee of the chairpersons. And we did ask them to go through their part of the existing comprehensive plan, look at the action plan, and get back to us what they've accomplished or where they are at something. If things have come off as they're going through, just like we did, we were going through, we're like, hey, we should do something like this in the future and just make notes, but we didn't ask them for the next stage, but at least to get a benchmark of where they are right now. So that is in process. But, yeah, I mean, everything is ground to a halt right now. And then we've got to figure out how to get this stuff back up without crippling these people and having them quit and go someplace quieter. So.
Where could they have more fun?
Yeah. So, all right. So I, I would ask someone, we just discussed this while you guys were in conference, I would like to push off, and I don't think we need a date certain, the priority, the review of the priority in the planning board to give Steve an opportunity to go through these and figure out if he wants to be part of any part of these things or if he has anything else to add. I, I would, based on everything else that here, I mean, I hate to say it, from a planning perspective and from my, my heart, I think these things are like stuff we should have been doing yesterday.
Yeah.
But in a practicality sense, we've got so much stuff coming down that I would probably look at this in September. I don't know how we have to formulate that. I don't know how we have to formulate that legally.
No, there's nothing. This is, this is just something you wanted to do. There's no legal bound.
So do you guys agree to push this off to September? We'll bring it back on the agenda in September. Steve, that'll give you a chance to go through it, and actually give everybody else a chance to go through it and figure out, okay, you know, these are still priorities, or here's something else that's going to happen, stuff like that. Okay. Coastal access community committee.
Is that Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Are you making an actual motion, or?
We were told we didn't have to make a motion.
Okay.
Note to file.
Note to file. Liaison updates, coastal access improvement committee, committee is actually kind of regrouping a little bit because we had, I think, two or three new members because of termouts. And so the main project is still on, and that is, although our, the group that we're working with on a state level may lose their funding because of the federal government. But the project, and Steve, I'm not sure if you're aware, but.
I haven't reassessed myself yet.
Yeah, we really tried to get focused on a single, to, coming from the business side and the engineering side, I mean, I wanted a product. And so what we've really been focusing on is right-ofways. Not only legal right-ofways, but traditional right-ofways. And starting to create an inventory of those. Are they, you know, what kind of public access are there? Is there parking? Is it handicapped? What can you do there? These types of things. And then the next step would be interactive mapping system, where you could click on it and the information would come up. If it's a neighborhood, right of way, then you would click on it, nothing would come up because there isn't public access to that and things like that. So that is still the focus of the group. So we're still, we're regrouping, but it's a great group, nice group of people. Thank Conservancy Trust.
That's Steve, buddy.
It is Steve.
They did accept me. I got the notice in the mail this week. I haven't been down to swear in front of the clerk yet. I will get that done. Unless you sign the paper or whatever.
Do you have to sign anything?
They sent me something.
Yeah, you got to sign.
I got to do something.
You got to sign. And you got to give point. You don't have a first point?
So the meeting is next week, anyway. You didn't miss anything.
Perfect.
The meeting is next, the, I don't know, the 29th.
I know I have it in my phone calendar already, so I'll be there.
Just so he doesn't get into any trouble, that online ethics course that we have to take every year, do we know, or can we find out how he gets online to do that?
I have it in my email. I haven't taken it yet.
Okay, please get that done and then get the notification to us that, or.
You send it to the clerk's office.
Yeah, go to the clerk's office. You got to.
I do that before I go sign it. And I, two birds want to sell that.
You got to print out that certificate.
Gotcha.
Okay, cool. All right. I would like to form a subcommittee for subdivision regulation review. Do I have any motions of anybody?
Sure.
Yeah?
I'm always willing to pass it off to other people. I would dominate Tom and Rupert because they are great subdivision guys.
They are. Do I have any second on that?
Second.
Seconded? Are you guys okay with that? It doesn't matter? All those in favor? So I'm going to, I'm going to leave you with Jill, all right? And let's give her some time to get through this, but.
I have a draft.
Thank you very much. I say you very much. I'm going to ask Heidi, we get through this mess?
Nope, we need the minutes from Marjorie to be.
Oh, that's right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I have some.
Of course you do.
On page one, A1, the third line there under Chairman's announcements, the proposed zoning ordinance amendments recommended to town council and is recommendation by town council.
Who, what?
Instead of to by?
Strike the word "to" and insert the word "by."
I'm sorry, I'm trying to specify where we're at. A1.
Line three.
Line three. About the third word from the end, fourth word from the end of the line.
So.
I can't see it.
So go down, go to A1.
Yep.
Go down to line three that starts with I and B1.
Okay.
Go to the way, go to the end of the sentence where it says town council. The word before town council, "to."
Yep.
Strike that, strike that word "to," insert the word "by," B1.
Thank you.
And then.
Oh, there's more?
Yep, at the bottom of that page. The second line in the paragraph that starts, Mr. Resnick stated, the conservation event. The second line there, there's a sentence that starts, he did, he did note that the drainage fee association, associated. It should be the homeowners association fee instead of the drainage fee.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And then on page six, D6. And I want to insert a couple of sentences here.
I'm sorry, yes.
Page six.
Page six, yep.
D3, I'm sorry.
D3?
Yeah, so the second block of text there talks about, they discuss their daughter's condition and necessity for paving the driveway. And also noted correspondence from the daughter's doctor testing the daughter's condition and needs. And then it says, board members raised concerns about the runoff caused by the impervious surface of the driveway. And this is where I went at. Which they believe will be concerns of CRMC. And then I want to add another sentence there. They offered several suggestions for resolving the issue. They did, or we did? We did. It's talking about the board. Actually, for resolving the issue in a way that meets the, it's Kitson's needs.
They offered several suggestions to resolve the, to resolve the issues, what?
In a way, in a way that meets the Nitson's needs. Kitson's needs. I just wanted to reflect that. We gave the reasons why we denied it. And with those changes, I move we approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody have anything they need to bring up urgently, or?
Yeah, I would, so, got a phone call. In any case, got a phone call. It's, what's going on over at the senior center down there? You're having a meeting to try to dissolve or disintegrate or dismiss the town planning board. And I said, what? What are you talking about? He said, yeah. He said, I got to go up and something because they know you're on it and we will, and. You know, the wonders of electronics today, how easily you can start a rumor. And everybody in the room knows there's a meeting over at the senior center, right? Discussing the difficulties of those 14 amendments, et cetera, other things. But in any case, the idea that someone would start a rumor like that to, it's beyond me that, of course, I grew up without, without electronics, so it's, I guess, that's where I come from.
It was called gossip, then.
Minutes. Yeah, but gossip, it would maybe get out of this room, but it wouldn't go. But now you can flood the country, right, with stuff like that? And the idea of, first of all, it's a very negative type of concept, but the idea that there's a town meeting, you know, in a locale to dismiss, get rid of, the town planning board. That's, I'm sure they'll talk about the planning board and the stuff that they were. They'll get into that, but the idea of being able to, in such a short time, totally change, you know, what is fact into this fantastic fiction is just a con.
Anybody else?
Well, by the way, Megan, when we leave, we're dismissed, I don't.
No such luck. I heard that down the lumbiar this morning, Doc. Heard some, I think they said it jest, but. So he said, now that you're on there, they want to get rid of it. I said, yeah, I'm doing it.
Anybody have anything else? All right, Staff, anything?
No.
No? Are we at that stage where I can pull the trigger?
Move to adjourn.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Non-debatable? All those in favor? Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input on that.